Welcome, everyone. So I will be starting us out tonight as we have, we are greeting a new board tonight. And so my name is Andrew Jones and the Assistant Superintendent. And the first order of business is to elect a chair. And so I'll start by seeing if there are any nominations for Board Chair.
No, my name is Edie Branning.
All right, any discussion?
Should be great.
Motion to approve.
Ten moves.
All right. Yes, we, yes.
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you. All right. Thank you. I will now turn it over to you.
Thanks. That was, I'm sorry, Andrew, the hardest part of the meeting. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the March 11th School Board Meeting of the Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District. We have an agenda to run through and I'm going to hopefully change the order a little bit. So I'm going to apologize for that in advance. And then we will kind of get started. So we need to elect a couple more officers to start with. Before we do that, I'd just like to welcome new board members. So we'll come back when we get to the agenda. So I'm adding a quick item. Which is there again. So we'll go with that as it is on there on the agenda. Community comments. And then we're going to do committee assignments. But I would love to do committee reports before we talk about committee assignments. So that committee, current committee chairs have the opportunity to just share a few things about what they do and what their committee does. And then folks will understand better for that. So we can pop that committee reports up ahead of committee assignments. Then we can talk about board compliance, governance management, the superintendent report, approving minutes, and any other business at the end of the meeting. How do folks feel about that agenda shift? Great, great, great. Thank you, everybody. So Steve Diglio is our new board member. You can wave at us if you want, from Bolton. And Steve, I'm assuming that you received an affirmation of office already? And you can sign that electronically? And if you haven't, just let me know. Also Susan and Gail, who are both, all of you are electronic. So all of you will get them online. And then please return that. And that will be the official, yes, I accept the vote and I am going to follow the board rules and all of that. And then we'll touch base after that, yes? Great. Okay, thank you. Let me know if you have any questions on that. Need to elect a vice chair? Oh, yeah, question.
Is that coming from the school or the town?
From the school.
From the school, okay.
From the school. And you will also have an MMU USD email address. So things will get sent to both to start. And then, but yeah, if you have a couple of minutes after, we can touch base right after the meeting and do a bunch of those kind of housekeeping pieces. That would be great because it's, there's a lot right off the bat. So, all right, thank you. Can I get a nomination? Or nominations are open for vice chair. So anybody who can nominate yourself or you can nominate another person.
I nominate, yeah. Please do that.
Can do that. For, for vice chair. Any other nominations? Any other interest? Okay, any discussion?
Should also be great.
Hoping you would say all in favor. Give me a. Great, thank you. That looks unanimous to me. Okay, great, thank you. Congratulations, Steve. Thanks. Get ready for lots of communication from me again. It wasn't that bad. Oh, good. Like, I like that.
More.
Yeah, that's exactly what I heard. And we need nominations for a clerk. Are there any nominations for a clerk? Nominations. I have two nominations on the floor for Lisa. Any other nomination? Any discussion?
Awesome, great.
Thank you.
Was it true that there's a thing?
Feeling it.
All in favor? Give me an eye. Hand or a thank you. Any opposed? Any extensions? That looks unanimous to me. Okay, great, thank you. We have a slate of board officers. So let's do our roll call. Pat, if you don't mind. And then Steve, if you want to, after that, just say a couple of words to introduce yourself. Actually, let's do a little introduction to everybody. So why doesn't everybody say your name? I'm going to write this down. Your name, your town. How long you've been on the school board? And what brought you here? In like three sentences or fewer. So short version of what, what made you decide to run for office? How's that sound? Yep. All right, Pat, I think we're ready.
Excellent. Tara Anderson?
Oh, first. Hi, Pat. Hi, buddy. Tara Anderson, her pronouns. I am one of the Richmond representatives. I am in the second year of my second term. And I am a part of the school board because when my children were younger, I watched how much the schools and teachers and people in this district cared for them. And this is the way that I'm giving back to my community.
Thank you. Kevin Campbell?
That's me, Kevin Campbell, from Underhill. One of the founding board members of this district.
You're great to meet you.
Before that, a few other years on the Underhill ID board. And yeah, I'm doing this because I showed up to a meeting and everyone else was already on the board. They needed somebody to sit.
Sure.
Been doing it ever since.
And you're probably our longest, currently longest serving board member. Grandfather, probably.
We lost a few.
We lost a few that have been here for a while. Yep.
Were you?
I don't think so. Maybe, folks.
I think I was 2012.
Oh, so we've been serving almost the same. Yeah.
Thank you. Heather Chadwick?
Hi, I'm from Richmond. I am in my first term. Third year term, third year. A third year of my first term.
Why are you here?
Because I believe that you need to help create the community you want to live in and be an active member of that, so.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Allison Conan?
Hi, I'm Allison Conan, also from Richmond. And I joined when Heather did, so I guess that means, all right, well, there you are. I just looked this up. We expire in 2025. And yeah, I also just have a really strong belief that you have to show up and help out with the community. I have two kids in the school district as well and just happy to be here, still feeling new. So it's nice to see some other new people. Don't, don't feel too alone, even those of us who have been here a while probably still feel kind of new.
Thank you. Gail Conley?
Gail, we see that you're here and I don't think you're muted. I just don't know if you have enough. There you are. You might have to turn your volume up. I don't see mute on your screen, but we can't hear your words.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
I'm from Huntington. I think this is the beginning of my third term. I'm not sure. This is a grade school district and I'm interested in helping the board make it even better.
Great. And Gail is a former superintendent of this district also.
Yeah, that's true. Surprise.
Edie Branning?
Hi, Edie Branning. I have, I am from Jericho. I have been on the board since about 2012, starting with the Mount Mansfield School Board. And then this board, as it became the consolidated district. I'm here because I believe that education is the pillar of society and all of that. And that if you love to learn and learn how to learn, then you could do anything. And I want to create space where we do that in our community. That's why I'm here.
Is Eric Gildemeister still with us?
He is no longer on the board.
Thanks. Diane Kirsten Glipman?
She is also no longer on the board. Steve Diglio is a new board member. You're going out with medical.
Thank you. Go ahead, Stephen.
Hello, everybody. Steve Diglio, Town of Bolton. Been in the Town of Bolton since 2013. I've been activated, I'm active in the municipal side of things here for a while. When Andrew decided to step down, didn't seem like anyone else wanted the position or was going forward. So I didn't want the Town of Bolton to lose their voice on this board. So that's why I'm here. I have two kids of school age. And I also am a firm believer that equipping our kids with strong academic knowledge and critical thinking skills is critical. So I'm a big believer in education.
Thank you. Susan Lilich?
Still muted.
Sorry. I'm Susan Lilick. I'm from Jericho. I spoke on the Jericho Elementary Board in 2008. And I was on the JS Board and then on the MMU Board until 2019. Took a cup, took a few, about a three-year break, four-year break, I guess. And now I'm back. So it's been a long time that I've been on various boards. And I guess, yeah, my day job, I'm a child and family sociologist. And I'm a big believer in public schools. And I, I love being part of everything related to my community. I'm a big community. I'm a communal person. I'd probably live in some sort of communal situation if I could. So anyway, this is, this is the next best thing.
Thank you. Ethan Maro?
Hi, Ethan Maro from Huntington. I actually served one year on the old board as a filling. And then I think this is my second year of my third round, but I'm speculating on that. I work in a village education. Education is really critical in all facets. My father, I would give him the most credit for community service. It was just something that was part of our family. So it was a great opportunity.
Stuart Morjo?
I don't see Stu.
Katie Nelson?
Hi, I'm Katie Nelson. I live in Richmond. I have an elementary student and a middle school student. This is the first year of my second term. So thank you, everyone, for re-electing me. And I am here because I want to echo all of the great things that all of you have said. And I have a background in education. I'm an art teacher and an arts educator. And I came to the board because of the beautiful experience that my kids had in this district or are having, but also because I have a kiddo who receives special services. And I really want to be present to represent that community of parents and children in our school and our district.
Thank you. Lisa Pollak?
Hi, I'm Lisa Pollak from Underhill. This is the third year of my first term. And I joined the board after my child graduated in an effort to give back to the community that supported them so well.
Do we have any other new members?
I think that's it. So we currently have two one-year seats open in Jericho and, don't go anywhere, Gracey, and one open seat in Underhill. And I think I have people that will fill the seats in Jericho. So not to jinx anything, I think we're going to have folks for the next meeting, but we'll talk about that next meeting, I think. So we have, yep.
Right. And our student reps are Abby O'Malley?
Hi, I'm Abby O'Malley. I'm from Bolton. This is my first school year, I guess, on the board. And I joined because I want to work in education in the future. So I thought being on a school board and kind of seeing how it all works would be a great opportunity for me.
And Gracie Batsy?
Hi, I'm Gracie. I live in Jericho. I'm a senior at MMU. This is also my first year on the board. And I joined to be a voice for all of the students in the district from our preschools all the way up to our seniors in high school, just to give, make sure that they are having a piece of all the things that we do on the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Can we just, can you tell us who's replaced whom and what positions are still open? So Stephen has stepped into Andrew's, was elected to fill Andrew's seat in Bolton. Correct. And Susan is in Diane's seat? Okay. So, so we still have two one-year terms in Jericho and one three-year term open in Underhill for Eric. Okay. And so who are the other two? Oh, we still haven't replaced those two from. Correct. A while ago. Okay. But right now I have two, two people in Jericho. That's okay. Who have said, expressed interest, but have not yet sent a letter. Okay. And Diane has said that she would be willing to fill in one of the one-year terms. We need that. So we have possibly, until we get letters, we don't, but we have one person for sure. And we might have two others for those, for those spaces. So we still need somebody in Underhill. If anybody is watching and has any interest in Underhill, reach out to any of the board members. I've lost track of what, how many seats are on the full board now? Fifteen. Fifteen, okay. Plus the student seats, plus the student seats. Okay. It's a tiny board. Well, it kind of is lately, right? Thank you. Susan, did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. I, yeah, I wish to say that I was, I was in a fill-in. I was, I had stepped in to fill in, like, one of, either, I guess Chuck's vacancy or Tom's, one of the vacancies. So that is a little confusing because I was actually appointed and now I'm, and then I was, I was elected. So, so we still have, that's why we still have two vacancies. Anyway. But sounds like maybe not for long. This would be great.
Okay. Community comments. Are there any community comments tonight? I'm not seeing any. There's nobody here? Okay. So then before we do committee assignments, let's do committee reports. And in addition to your report on what your committee has been doing, could you just do a short overview of your committees you have? I don't know, do we have links to all of our committee? No. I have links to the charters. Okay. But not all of them, though. And I thought we had more created. Okay, I have links to some of the charters. It's okay. I don't think we're going to keep going with that committee. I think we have to figure that out. So go ahead, Katie.
So again, I'm Katie Nelson. Or Stephen. I am the Chair of the Community Engagement and Communications Committee. Last year, we really took a look at our charter and we created goals and official tasks for the committee, all of which are rather fluid because the primary role of our committee is to serve the board when there is like a big issue that needs to be communicated to our community. So this year, it has really been Act 127 and budget, that's taking front and center. But our charter is to represent the informed voice of the community and coordinate the board's work, maintain the relationship between the community and the district via community engagement and communication. There's a lot of comms there. I would say our meeting was this morning. And so I don't have the minutes ready yet. But we talked about making sure that we have our bases covered for communications to the community regarding the vote on April 2nd and our budget information meetings. And also really clearly explaining and pushing out how we got to this place. And so we created a list that will hopefully serve for our future efforts for communications. We've heard through this process, you know, we haven't been able to cover all of our bases every time. So we want to make sure that in the future we are able to do that through the local newspapers, like our district newspapers, our district happenings, local front porch forums and Facebook pages and word of mouth, which I charge to all of you to be sure that you are connecting with your own community and your own friends and family. And really just word of mouth is super important when it comes to getting information out. And I'll be, not right now off the top of my head, but I will be assigning people from each town to sort of be the representative for pushing out that information that our committee creates to ensure that we have a solid voice and that your constituents are receiving the same information that people in other towns are receiving. We also talked about, a little bit about web design, really coming, it's always top of mind coming through our website, making sure that all of that information is accurate and readily accessible. And is there anything that I might have missed? I, I would say we have right now one, two, three, four, five members. And one, we'll do that part next. Okay. Ta-da. Thank you. So that is the Community Engagement Committee. One of the things that you said is we're going to have folks host on Front Porch Forum. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that you have the opportunity on Front Porch Forum to list yourself as a school board member. And that changes your setup just a little bit. It gives you as a government, because you're a municipal director. So just so everybody knows, you can look at your setup there and that will automatically list you for things.
Is that recommended?
It is recommended. It is recommended. Yeah. Unless you're trying to sell something. Right. Well, I have two profiles and it does get messy, but it is easier sometimes. Yep. But that's an option also. Okay, so Tara, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Committee. The Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging, or DEI committee, was formed within the last year. But then sharing that committee since its inception. What we've been tasked with is training with our board, working together to promote diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, not just on the board, but within our schools because I've also been sitting on the district's AVAR Council, which is the anti-bias, anti-racist council. Racist racism, racism. Thank you. We last met on February 15th and had a much bigger conversation about land acknowledgements because we were doing a land acknowledgement. You'll see it in the agenda, which we have stopped doing because we have some different ideas behind it based on research that Katie had done. So more to come on that. And also recently, for everybody who's been on the board, has been seeing the front porch forum posts about the brown marker, Jericho Elementary, right? Or is it Brown? Thank you. And we had a discussion about that our last DEI committee meeting. And we're going to follow up like the historical society and find out, you know, potentially, why is it there? Does it have to be on our school? And is it something that could get moved to a different piece of Jer, a different area in Jericho? Those are the kinds of things we've been up to. Thank you. Finance and facilities, these stuff.
Hi. So our committee is, our mission is to ensure the financial stability and best value to the district while ensuring we provide the highest quality education to our students. We're preparing for the budget informational meetings, both March 14th and March 28th. And we hit the ground running almost at the beginning of the school year to start putting together the budget for the following year. So, and this, most recently, we also made sure there was a five-year plan for facility and maintenance that was needed. We started to put that together. And yeah, try to look a little bit further ahead rather than just the next school year.
Okay. Thank you. HR Committee, that's me. Got our charter open. We look at the human resources needs for managing long-term district priorities to make recommendations to the board for district-wide priorities related to human resources and personnel, also related to governance policy, policies and updates. We try to ensure that we have a strong linkage between our priorities, human resource priorities, personnel priorities, and the district goals. Collaborate with the administration to develop guidelines for union contracts and consulting with an attorney as, oh, which we also consult with an attorney. We recommend collective bargaining agreements to the full board, which means we go through the entire process of negotiating those contracts, which this year is a negotiating year coming up. And we take the legal and superintendent evaluation hiring and contract negotiation with the superintendent. And we recommend the superintendent contract to the full board. So that's the HR Committee. We have been in the process of finding a search firm to help us with our search for the superintendent because John is getting ready to retire at the end of next school year, not this one, but next one. So that's what we've been doing. And I think that's everything. Yeah, that's our committee. So, okay. Regional Advisory Board, Ethan, you want to take that?
I don't know what there is to take. Regional Advisor Board is part of the Career Tech Ed system. Needs four times a year. Is advisory at best. But certainly, I think there's an opportunity there to advocate for change and have a better, 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 more direct input into how the regional career tech education system is, is operating.
Great. And BSD Legislative. Tara, you wanted to get one?
Yes, because I do that too. Thinking of how many meetings I have this week. I also sit on the Vermont School Boards Association.
I also sit on the Vermont School Boards Association Board of Directors. Um, we meet monthly and, um, everybody should have received the legislative update in their emails. It was big. I'm not going to paraphrase it because I won't do it justice. Uh, but we have a meeting this Wednesday night where I will have more for you next time.
Great. All right. So that's our committee reports. Um, so the next step is to determine committee assignments. So I'm going to start with for folks, um, does anybody have questions about what a committee does? Or what, anything that you have, a committee that you haven't been on and you have questions about what it does? Yes.
Would you mind if I just talked about the other committee that we haven't met for a while?
I think that would be great.
So there's another committee, which we started our work a year ago, um, called the Regional Collaboration Committee. It was collaboration. And, uh, you know, we, I think we worked, uh, really hard in the spring and summer. Um, and then for a couple of reasons, I think we just decided we have enough other stuff going on this year. Um, that by folks not showing up and nobody noticing, we, we put that work on hold. Um, the purpose of that committee, I still think is really important, which is to look externally at other organizations, whether they be other school districts, uh, other nonprofit organizations, government agencies, kind of the whole umbrella of other groups that are out there to try to make what we do better, um, as a district or as a broader group. One of the, uh, small wins that we were able to achieve this year was we had the Essex. No, yeah, Essex was the Essex Tech Center Superintendent share his budget with us. Um, so we get a little bit more insight into that. Um, and as a, as a committee, Ethan and I, I think in our last meeting, we agreed that we would focus on tech as one of our key priorities. But I, I think if we continue to have that committee, um, you know, looking at that and also the opportunities for cost, um, you know, given where we are right now, cost savings might, might be something that the board wants to continue to do. Um, but right now it's kind of been on, on hold while we get through the last few months.
Great. Thank you. Um, Steve, could you mute when you're not talking? I think there's some, you probably can't hear it on your end, but there's some folks talking in the background over there. Thank you. Um, I was trying to figure out where that sound was coming from. It was just in my head or in the whole room. All right. Um, so thank you. So I agree, regional collaboration is super important. I'm not sure that we have a task for the committee right now to collaborate regionally, which is, you know, I think that might be ad hoc, I think, unless we want to be the leaders in the region. Um, but we haven't really found that the VSB is, is willing to support it or that we can make that work at a different level, I think. But yeah, if there's strong desire from the board to make that committee happen again, then I'm all in. I think it's an important thing that we can't do things ourselves and that we want to have as many partners to make, to get things done as possible. So thank you. That's valuable. Um, other comments, questions about committees and committees to join? Oh, and I should say, um, everyone's required to be on a committee, um, and often an alternate on a second committee. So just so that we can get all the work done, a lot of work happens in those committees and, um, we folks to be really committed to that. Yeah.
Um, I know the alternate is important for sake of quorum. Does the alternate attend regularly?
Yeah. So most alternates find that they're most effective when they're up to date on what's going on.
Right.
Um, and there's always somebody who can't attend and it always is a strong statement, but often. Um, so yeah, it's, you know, and some committees meet every six weeks, once a month. Um, you know, somewhere in between there. Sometimes committees have to meet more often than that because they're in the middle of something. So it's usually not more than once a month for a committee meeting and an hour. They're pretty firm on an hour. Comments, questions, committee membership? Yes.
Um, when do these committees meet typically? I, I see some at 8:00 AM, some after work. Uh, just kind of want to get a sense of the different meeting times for the different.
Yeah. No, that's, that's important. Um, the Finance and Facilities Committee, um, meets at six o'clock at night on a Thursday. And that's been pretty set in stone for as long as the board has been on, I think. That one hasn't moved much, rightly so. Um, and then, um, DEIB Committee sometimes meets at noon and sometimes meets at eight in the morning. Same thing as the Community Engagement Committee, although they have regularly been meeting Monday mornings at 8:00 AM. That's pretty firm right now. Um, HR Committee, um, when we are not doing negotiations, meets, um, usually at 8:00 AM or at noon. Um, when we are doing negotiations, it's right after school. So that's a three o'clock start time. And that's not everybody. Uh, and that's all the committees. Yes. Yeah. So the committee time, meeting times can change based on maybe the committee membership, right? Like everyone has that ability, but these are the times that have worked so far. Any new questions? Yeah. Um, I think it's also important to understand that there is a member of the district administration that, um, is available. I don't want to say.
The liaison.
The liaison between the committee and the district. So they attend and they're, they answer a lot of questions that we have about how things might happen, our decisions being made in the meetings. Thanks. Yeah.
Good. Meeting that happens on Thursday nights, which Thursday night of the month is it?
Uh, usually the third Thursday of the month.
Okay. Next, I, the fourth, I'm already spoken for other meetings. So.
Is that the available time?
Well, um, I'm a civil engineer, so I'm kind of wondering if it makes sense for me to be in, I don't know what committee may be involved with getting you guys into compliance with the various things coming down the pike, like the three acre permit stuff or the water testing stuff. Um, but that's something that I could probably be pretty helpful with or potentially.
Yep, that's Finance and Facilities. That kind of thing would go in front of that committee. Um, yeah. Yeah. Okay. And then, yeah. Other comments or questions?
Do you want to just explain what forum is for those committees or what that changes or?
You know, I think we want, we want four or five people on each committee, um, so that we, two or three is forum. Um, just to make sure that we have, um, and yeah, that should give everyone an opportunity. I guess, um, we've done this a few different ways. We've had people kind of shoot me an email to say what committee and whether you want to be an alternate or a, um, permanent member. And then, sorry, I'm going to, um, and we did during the meeting, we've had signups. Now that we have half promote and half in person, I think it's harder to do that. So if everyone can send me an email in the next 48 hours.
Didn't we use Google Doc? Didn't you like set up a Google Doc and we just put our names under the committees?
Um, yeah, I have the Google Doc already set up. I can take everybody's names out of it and it just, I can do that. Sure. Unless, yeah, I'll do that.
I think it would be more helpful, right? And this is me being concerned that eight people are going to sign up for one committee and only one person will sign up for another, that if everything is vetted through our chair, then at least you can write back and say, I've already got eight people who want to do this. Can you consider something else?
Oh, yeah. I was just sitting in some.
Yeah. Whatever you want to do.
Um, yeah, why don't you send them all to me in the next 48 hours? That would be great. Um, first, second, choice and alternate, if you want to, you know, if you have a, that kind of a thing. And then we'll kind of do a little bit of a back and forth. And that way that gets me until I'll get it all done by next weekend. And we can, like that'll be time to have back and forth with folks as necessary.
Probably helpful to note too, that a lot of these committees already have their meeting, their first meeting of the new year.
Scheduled.
Scheduled, which is where they have to choose a chair.
Yes.
Right. Because the current chair doesn't have to continue as the chair of the committee.
Correct. Yeah. So Katie, um, April 1st is Community Engagement. DEIB is the 25th, working on it likely the 25th in the morning. Uh, Finance and Facilities is this Thursday. Um, HR Committee. Wow. The only one I don't know is the one I share. That doesn't, not good. Um, it's funny, right? Well, that's because we do have one though.
Some people.
Yes, it's in April.
Maybe it's on your calendar.
Yeah, I'll get that permission before we get out, but it's, it's in April. So we have a little bit of time for that one. Um, we did schedule one. I don't, I don't have to do that. Yeah. When you update the charter.
Chart.
Yep. Will you update all of the charges?
Already done.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Um, April 29th is the next HR Committee meeting. Yes. Grace.
Um, I, I don't know if student reps have to join committees, but I don't think it's very productive for me to join one since I'm graduating in three months. So I know that.
I think you're, I think you're not busy enough and you should be on all of the committees.
That's what I was thinking too.
Absolutely, Grace. We, we are correct. Yeah. So we do have, um, a student rep on the, not one of our board reps. Usually we have student reps just on committees. So the board reps are, um, only repping board level, the full board. And then we have additional reps, um, on the other committees as necessary. So right now only, um, Community Engagement has a rep, but we have had, um, students on the other, other committees as well. So thanks for that follow-up. Um, all right. Are we ready to move on? Yes. So, um, board compliance, so linked to the agenda is somewhere. Uh, 2023 Board Survey Questions. And I'm just going to say normally we don't do this at the first meeting of the year. Normally we do this in February or January, but because of all the budget changes, we are a little behind. So apologies. And, um, also we often just have a survey that everybody answers. Um, and then we can talk about the results. Um, that's not the way we did it this year. So, um, and what I'd like to do is two things. I'd like to kind of run through questions and see how we're doing on them and then see if there are other questions that we should be asking to make sure that we are, um, working within policy. So this is a two-fold thing. It's, are we working within policy governance and are we effectively doing our jobs? So hopefully these questions get to those things. So, um, so if you, um, uh, could you put that up on the screen? Thanks, Brett. The first question is coming up on the screen. It will be there in just a second. Um, it says, "The board developed policies and objectives that serve as organizational guardrails that limit the latitude the superintendent may exercise in choosing the organizational means."
Are you looking for feedback on these questions? Are you running through the whole list of questions?
I was just going to do one question at a time and then feedback on this one. Are we doing this all right? Does it make sense the way we're doing it? Does the question itself make sense? Like all of that? Since like, yeah. Do you have something you want to go?
Do you have anything to follow up?
All right. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm not seeing any questions.
What do you mean by organizational means?
So means is how the organization gets things done, what the day-to-day is.
Ends versus means is how I.
Yeah.
Wrap my head around it for.
The, just as a new member, what, what is the current policy, uh, for, for the superintendent?
Yep. So all of our policies are on the website. There are, there is a whole section, um, called the executive limitations section. So if you go under School Board and Policies, you'll see our, um, global ends, executive limitations, governance, management connection and governance process. Um, so, yeah, we haven't talked yet, but we do have a giant orientation for you. It will be helpful. So, um, that's one of the pieces that, that will be covered, but these, you know, so our policies are pretty extensive for policy governance, uh, for the way we kind of do our work. And so this is, the question is, have we given the, um, the superintendent the right guardrails or the right guardrails so that the superintendent knows what they can do to get the job done? That's it.
I feel like you need to phrase the question that way.
Yeah.
Putting it in, in more grace.
Um, great. But then like frankly, all of policy governance gets me that way. So sit there and I try to like define the word.
Yep.
And then I get stuck. All right. So go with what I said. So, "Has the board developed effective guardrails so that the superintendent understands, um, their job? How they can meet the district's end?" The only problem with that is I think it, it's asking us if the superintendent feels like they have the appropriate. Like it, it's a question about the superintendent as opposed to, do we think that we gave the superintendent what they need to be effective? And maybe that is the question, but I don't know how to answer that. I would say to the superintendent, do you feel like you have the guardrails that you need to be effective?
John probably answered it better than I, given slightly differences in our, our roles. But, you know, all to speak for myself with the work that I do with John. And, um, I would say that the policy governance, um, piece that we have are very clear. And that, you know, when I work with John, there's never any level of ambiguity. It's, he knows what the, what the guardrails are.
That's it. The key word for me is develop, right? So they're there. We've developed them. They live there.
I guess we're not asking if they work. We're just saying they've developed.
Okay. I see.
That's not, they're there and we talk about them a lot. I think that that's the, the important part in my mind. It's like, I think for a long time, I was like wrapping my head around the question of means and, and what does that actually mean? Um, and so I would say, yes, you've done that. I guess thinking of the objectives part, um, because I think about like the policy is that one line and then those objectives, there's sort of sub-bullets, um, a little there. And I guess, I guess what it's saying is that I need to reread the policy section.
Every year.
Every year.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I'm going to do clarification.
Yeah. Over the last year, I can't think of a time in a board meeting where the superintendent has asked for within clarification on, you know, am I going over the limits and the within limits? So I don't, I don't have any examples to say that, but not this. I'm curious, uh, from the Chair and Vice Chair's perspective, has there been any outside of board conversations where we needed to do some interpretation?
Very few. Yeah, very few. Um, yeah, no, I, I think that, I think that we're pretty good. I think our policies are pretty clear. I think that, um, our superintendent feels safe in making tough decisions. Um, that's been my experience. Yeah. All right. Um, I'm going to move on to the next one. Um, "Does the board ever prescribe organizational means? So how to, um, so direct the, yeah, direct the administration on how to handle day-to-day operational issues that have already been delegated to the superintendent?" So again, to Alison's point, this feels a little bit like a question that the superintendent should. So again, to Alison's point, this feels a little bit like a question that the superintendent should answer. I wonder if the next year we do this, we want the superintendent to answer questions also, answer the questions also.
And I'll just chime in to say like, again, um, I have not seen anything like that since I've been here and John has never mentioned anything. So I feel like, again, the policy governance structures really make it very clear, like who's supposed to be doing what.
Yeah.
You know, I think this this is also an opportunity for like individual board members who maybe saw, you know, the board do something. And like, I don't think that was, you know, that was all too to kind of speak up, right? And say, actually, we are getting a little bit into this, I mean, we shouldn't be staying further out. But I don't have any. It's a very uh, past year, I guess. Be like we we just organized yesterday, but um, and I think the my perspective, I think the board has um, stayed right level, not given any. Day-to-day.
Yeah, well, yeah, I feel like I do, because I feel like I do wade into this a little bit. Um, occasionally where, you know, I think it comes up oftentimes when um, we're doing budget priorities. And and I think the chair knows, has done a great job in sort of helping to sort of identify that line and when we're sort of walking over. But I I do feel like there are times where I'm thinking about, for me, transportation has been an issue that I've raised for time and time again, where I'm looking for more information. And trying to stay in that sort of like policy world, but I think it's 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 a it's a tough line sometimes to sort of identify is when are you crossing over it? And I think that collective part, Kevin, is is I think is a really important piece in that we're all here to check each other. Um, and be okay, right? Like if someone calls me out, I gotta be okay and would say, oh, right, right, I just sort of crossed crossed over that line. I think it can happen.
Yeah.
If I had, I think those are good examples, like when, I don't remember who brought it up, but you know, the the tank replacement and the electric bus.
For the sports fields.
And and when, when as a board member, when you when you pose a question for clarification that says, have you thought about electric buses? It it can be received as a question or as direction. And that's that fine line and we, you know, as long as there's somebody thinking about what about our high-level uh, targets, guardrails? And should be informing, like if we if we really want the district to go towards a different way of of getting our kids from A to B. Uh, what about our ends policies should we be adjusting to help move it, so to speak, in that direction versus should we get a new uh, tank or not?
Right?
Yeah.
But I also think it's important that you have shared that, but you're you've also shared in representing your community's voice. So a lot of the times, you know. It, I think we as a board communicate these things. We become passionate about something because we're also representing the people who are passionate about it. So I I think it's important that we share that, but I also think that that is like the golden rule of policy governance. To not be involved in that. So I think, you know, we feeling passionate about early literacy in ways that we we can change that or that the state could change that. Sharing that as a thinking body um, is really different than that example of feeling like we really need to change the color of this library. Right, so or I've done all this research and this is the early language system that you need to implement in this school or we need to implement in this school, right? Like that's two different, yeah. So I think like.
Here's the electric bus.
Staying in that big picture, right? Just from the policy governance training that we're doing, like the big picture is important and and it's okay to think about that and bring that when it's appropriate. And I don't think any of us have really brought forward a meeting ready.
Well, I don't think it's the earth today that people are just like, sort of brow-beating the superintendent on either and they have to change. If you raise the issue, you express your perspective. And then you're able to move on. I think the board chair might have a trickier time in that piece and then that's something that I wonder, you know, is that are there some parameters for the board chair? To be aware of specifically, do you think there is a different relationship?
Yeah.
Or at least the opportunity, I think. When you have a policy governance, you're setting up structure so that people don't go over the edge. And there's a lot of latitude within that, but it's like, once it goes too far, and I've I've seen that happen where a board is that you're going to do this. Um, against sort of like every recommendation coming from the school, they're just like.
So is it check and balance between like you, us, us, you and the superintendent? Right, like?
And it's all of our jobs collectively to make sure that we're following the rules that we set for ourselves. Um, some boards have a policy governance czar who is the person who keeps everybody on track. So we so far have chosen to have the chair do that. If anybody wants to do that, I am very open to having that as an additional role for someone, so just putting it out there. It's not like we're a part of covert or anything with V S B A on policy governance right now.
Seems to be working the way it is.
Uh huh. All right, does the board view a successful superintendent performance as adherence to policies by progress towards or accomplishment of board-stated objectives? All right, the English version. Is it, do we see?
Right out of the P G book or right?
Do we see that superintendent achieving success when policies are adhered to and there is accomplishment toward our ends?
Yes, through the superintendent's report, right?
Like that's about, that's all that's saying is is we got a superintendent's report and it checks off all the boxes we needed to.
Well, it's the moni, is it the superintendent report or the monitoring reports?
So this is when we look at, when we try to figure out if we think John is doing a good job or not, right? If for today, do we use whether he's meeting our policies and objectives as the focus for making a decision? That's what this one's.
Yes.
I would say yes, I am, right?
I mean, the history, right, this originally was just policies. And then we recently, over the last couple of years, added it with other objectives. When we do evaluate them. Annual basis at least. I don't know what else we would be evaluating on.
Yeah. Um, folks who are remote, I'm looking at the screen with your. Um, images on there, so I'm, if you have something to add, please don't let us in the room dominate this discussion. Um, I'm not seeing anybody with hands, I'm not seeing anybody with something else.
I guess.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Um, when it comes to success, is is, you know, the actual student performance and proficiency part of what we would be using to to judge or?
Yeah, so our ends policies talks about um, student outcomes and what we want to see, and it's not only um, educational outcomes, it's also whole student outcomes. And so we do get reports on that um, as well, so yes.
Can you just indulge me a whole student outcome?
Sure. So our global ends says. Oh, boy, make make it bigger. Yeah, I do. The school will support all students to become lifelong learners, effective engaged citizens of the world through diverse educational opportunities, community and parental involvement. And co-curricular activities that promote individual student aspirations at a reasonable cost. Every learner will complete their pre-K through twelve education with the knowledge and skills necessary for success in the community, post-secondary education and careers. The school district provides flexible and diverse learning environments rich with twenty-first century tools that promote self-development, academic achievement, life skills. And active engagement in learning. It operates within a framework of high expectations for every learner with support from educators, families and the community. And then we have four different, three, three different areas um, that we delineate just a little bit more than that. So we get reports on knowledge and skills, which is educational outcomes, citizenry and community, which is a little bit different from that and lifelong learners. So those are the kinds of reports that we get. And I would probably be able to look at our uh, agenda with these glasses to see. What report we're getting next. So earlier this year, we had the citizenry and community monitoring report, and that should be easy to access on our website. And it looks like um, next year we'll be getting the others. So starting in uh, a few August, sometime after that. So yeah, well, there's a lot, Steve, that you're gonna feel like I'm not really sure what they're talking about today especially, but probably. As Alison said, for the next couple of years and we're gonna do our best to get you up to speed. Oh, I was, I was a solid three years before I felt like I knew what was happening.
I think the policy governance stuff, especially for our first meeting, see, this is just.
It's hard.
It's hard. Yeah, I was just whispering under my breath that this is a really tough first meeting to be in, so.
This is take heart, yeah.
It's like jumping through the firehalls.
Yeah, very confusing firehalls.
Only do it before.
Right, why we, why this is not normally the way we do this for a first meeting. We are not trying to scare anybody away, we're just trying to catch up. All right, have all policies that instruct the superintendent been monitored at a frequency and by a method chosen by the board? Yes, and I put the calendar together with the leadership team, the board approves it, so. Yes, but yeah, if there's more opportunities for income input on that, I think we could do better. So I also think we need to be monitoring them more frequently. That's my take, go ahead.
But I would just say that from my first experience coming on to the board as a new board member and policy governance being very real, we spent a lot of time like wordsmithing. In meetings what didn't feel super effective and the work that was done by the ad hoc group to sort of to pull together all that word at a like, really made a difference from my perspective, like. We didn't spend time just trying, and we also did establish, and maybe it was a training, just sort of the idea that um. We really either accept or don't accept John's monitoring report. If we don't accept it, we're sort of charging the superintendent to sort of bring back more detail. Um, and we've asked for that in short time, so I think it's okay, you know, to say like, this doesn't actually work for me at this time. Like I I would like more, been really done, that's what's really just extremely thorough. But I think that that idea of like, we're not sort of digging in the weeds every single meeting or our policies is very helpful.
And just to add to that, once a policy has been monitored, a monitoring report's been written on that policy. He has been taking our input and adding it into the next one, so I think we're getting that, yeah, so we're getting better all the time with it. Which is good. Um, I'm gonna breeze through unless people are putting their hands up, so if you feel like I'm going too fast, stop me, but otherwise I'm gonna move on to the next question when I don't see hands or confused faces. Fair, fair, okay. Does the board communicate to the community its role, responsibility and accountability for district direction, policies and performance? Yeah.
I'd say this one is hard for the community um, because it's policy governance, which I think is not something that a lot of. Community members necessarily, I think we we could do more around explaining policy governance. My bad.
Um, let's just make this up in my mind, were we talking about doing this, okay, we should have spoken of policy governance? Okay, so I didn't pick it up. No, but it's something that we, you know, it's just, I feel like um, that would be a great idea. I think that that is something that is confusing. Considering most people, I think when they think of school boards, do you think of a more old-school, get involved in the many of how things work? So we just talked about um, introducing board members, starting with conversation about meet your board members and this is how we govern. But obviously, things have sort of been consumed by budget information.
Yeah.
As a plate, but that's a great goal.
Yep, pass that on to the committee chair.
Yeah.
So the way I I read this one, it's more than just describing um, policy governance. The last word, performance, I think is an area that we could, we can improve upon our performance of communicating our performance. Uh, meaning we, I think, do a a better job at communicating the changes that are happening. Um, kind of updates to different things that are going on, but I I don't know if we put any attention into. Or enough attention into communicating, how are we doing towards meeting our objectives, you know, with our community? Did we do a good job last year?
Yeah, no, I I think this is, and this is a goal that I've had that I have not yet implemented, which is that our golden apple awards to have that be of time to really share with the community how we've been doing. And I think it's been my goal for three years, so I think I get a really poor grade, um, but thank you for re-electing me tonight and. But I think you're exactly right, I think that we we all have more opportunities and more, yeah, we could do better.
I think too that this whole budget cycle has really taught us a lot about community and how it's been a tough luck. And being on the community, community engagement committee, um, I know that we definitely had conversations around. This is gonna be great to take the board, be able to disseminate other information outside of budget and like it was a real learning experience. If they're going forward, we'll probably be a lot better at this perspective. But. Definitely that much.
I feel a little discouraged tonight because we had so much, I mean, maybe too much because the meeting ran really long, but we had a lot of community interest just the last time we got together. And then no one came today and um, and we have a lot of open seats on the board and when there's a acute issue like a budget, people tune in. For obvious reasons, you all only have so much bandwidth in our life, but as I'm listening to the idea of like. How would we talk to the community about what policy governance is, like that to me feels like trying to talk to my kindergartner about molecular biology, like, you know, I, so. That goal feels, I don't know if it feels particularly realistic to me. Um, I would love to have that that kind of bandwidth, but then like, I look at my own engagement with like, for instance, our select board and what I can actually reasonably, as someone who has a deep commitment to civic engagement. Have the the bandwidth that I can devote to things that are going on in my own town. So I guess I just processing out loud a little bit what's in my head as I look at some of this. You know, these are, these are real challenges and unless there's a point of intersection with the public, like a vote. Um, it is hard to get people to connect and that's, you know, the reason why I said that piece about the select board is that I'm not passing judgment about it. It's just the realities of all of our lives.
I also think that maybe just to be a little clearer, like what expectations should be, we have around like communicate to be. What we should be communicating to the public, like. Yeah, that's an important bunch of stuff, four hundred percent. Um, but it's like we don't need to communicate, like all of our meetings are public, so it's like how much do we communicate to the public? They have an opportunity to come and let the other guys. Um.
Yeah, so like, are they engaging without actually engaging us?
I think the question could be just very generically, are we communicating effectively with our community? If that were the question on the first survey, somebody might have said, what does that mean? And then we would have added some more examples in the question the next time around. Not saying that that happened, but it's very well covered. So how we interpret these is, it's up to us because we're trying to reflect as a board, how are we doing? So, you know, think about it from the high level. Do we feel like we're doing enough on various, but then our uh communication that we want to improve.
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, as a, someone who's just newly on the board and was a member of the public, listening to these meetings occur and trying to catch up, one thing I found frustrating was that public comment only occurs at the very beginning of a meeting and not as the board moves through, through the agenda. And I know that can be difficult with seventeen people on a board and then getting comment from a bunch of people in the public, but um, I do think that would be a way to engage with the public quite a bit more is if they could actually engage with us through the meeting as we're going over agenda items. I found that, you know, something would already be discussed and voted on before I could even say anything the next meeting. There was kind of no point.
Yep, that's a, that's a complicated topic, and it is a common reaction um of new board members. And um, our meetings are meetings of the board, not meetings of the public, um, which are two very different things. So the meetings are designed to be times where the board is doing its work. We have talked about having meetings that were just about interacting with the public. Our um budget information meetings are that. And when we have big issues, we do have meetings of the public, or we do modify our rules about that. But yeah, um, as we do more board training, there are reasons in Vermont law and um that, that make it more clear as to why we do that, uh, why we have the policies the way we do on that. But I agree, it can be frustrating and it can feel like we don't have opportunities, which is why often a board member reaches out to an individual and has more discussion with them outside of the meeting time. So that is a, a fair point. It's a common discussion point, and we have been looking at different ways to um yeah, to have more input from the community. So definitely something we will talk about more. Um. Six, two more. Do we feel a sense of group responsibility for governing and ultimately the success of the district?
Yes.
That was clear.
We put an easy one in.
All right. Um, okay, not seeing too many faces online, but um, great. Um, are the policies, goals, objectives, and progress made toward meeting the, the and progress toward meeting them reviewed by the board on an annual basis?
Overarching, so like, it's not a comprehensive piece, like, to look at things as they come up, but it's not as if we sit there and review the large list of policies and each goal, each objective, and more progress. I think maybe like through John's bottom reports, you can see how things are sort of checked off. But I think that's more superintendent than, than the board.
I do think one of the things we had talked about as far as board training is like a policy governance, like something a little more heavy on policy governance, and John definitely touches upon that, if I can remember correctly, in his
Orientation?
Yeah, the orientation.
Oh, yeah, we have a policy about PG section.
Um, but I don't think it would hurt if there was something um sort of parallel to that where we took that time or that opportunity to sort of do that as a group for ourselves, or everyone attends that. Just because it, again, being like now in my first year of second term, it, it's hard when those policies live online and you're trying to become familiar with them and refer to them regularly. And that's just a bigger thought that I've had as far as the board, the ori- new board member orientation. I think, I think I attended them a couple times because you, you can do it for your first or second year. I mean, anyone can do it, but it doesn't hurt for all of us to become more familiar with those orientations and finding spots where we can expand upon board knowledge. So this is, this for me, and if, if this isn't the solution, then let me know. But for me, one of the goals that I have, we have right now, we do four policies a year. I think we should be doing a policy review every third meeting minimum. Um, and I think that will help us to be reviewing our policies more often. I think that the reports have been done. I think it's, it's gathering the, the data again and making sure that we're still in line. I think it's not as in-depth as it was before, and I think that that will help us in all of us, right? I think if we're doing more policy review at more meetings, we're gonna feel like we're reviewing that and we're gonna know how our, how we're progressing towards those goals more. So you know, I, this, this, going through these, these survey questions is reinforcing that we have to change what we're doing. And then our baby steps in, we're past that. And if that's, doesn't line up with what you just said, let me know. So I think that's the
No, I do. I think it needs to be more um like, just more a part of our language. Um, otherwise, it's still just going to feel like something that we're not familiar with, but we adhere to. Yeah.
And to, and to probably build on that, um, the policies that we have in place today were developed with our superintendent. Um, so that ownership and buy-in was there naturally with these policies. Next year, we get, we get to reset. And so we, we have to be comfortable, but we also have to probably put a little bit more discipline and um feedback into the process to make sure that whoever our superintendent is going forward, we have that same kind of buy-in. And that might require adjustments because perhaps the way John interprets something or thinks something should be is very different from how the next superintendent is looking. So I would expect um you know, more, more edits and having more frequent reviews would be helpful for that. Even though it's gonna be like, oh, we don't have time for this with the new superintendent, we're doing all these transitions. Well, I don't have time to write these reviews. Nope, it's really important to do it sooner than later so we can get calibrated.
Agreed, agreed. All right, so um, is there anything that we're missing in this? And this might be a feedback post-community, but um, as board members reflect on these questions, is there something that we're looking at that isn't being asked here, right? That's a hard question to ask, but.
I wonder if we want to put something in here about like the board sentiment or the satisfaction or something about the board member experience. You know, delicate subject, but we've had some turnover in the board and maybe we could, we could nip some of that in the bud before it comes to people getting to that point. I'm not saying that we should have done anything differently in the past, but is there a way that we could hope for some of that and find a way to address it so that it's not that it's, that it's managed productively instead of coming up at inopportune times or, you know, I don't know. That idea out there. I'm curious if anybody else has any reaction to that idea.
Yep. Question like, um, what would make your time serving on the board more engaging, something like that?
Yeah, oh, like, right, yeah. Or I feel, I feel um, like my contribution, like, this is a meaningful use of, or I'm, I'm excited about my commitment or something, yeah.
So as we were talking, I wrote, are you as a board member feeling like an active participant, participant in board decisions and district direction? But you're looking for something a little different than that.
Um, well, because of policy governance, right? Like, you're, you're probably not making active decisions. And honestly, like, welcome new board members, like, that was a bit of a, oh, a, a realization it took me a little bit of time to get to. Um, so I'm not sure it's necessarily about the ability to make decisions, but like, I feel like I'm positively contributing or um being a member of the board is a rewarding part of my, I don't know, I can't finish the thought, contributions to it, or? Yeah, yeah.
You feel what?
Yeah, and honestly, sometimes you put those kinds of things in a survey and people are like, oh, yeah, actually, you know what I mean? Like, it, it kind of gives you a moment to reflect and say like, hey, I'm, I, I, this is something meaningful to me. I thought it was lovely that we started the meeting today, kind of with why we're here, because like, especially after such a frankly in challenging couple of months, especially for the finance committee and the administration, like, it's nice to remember why we're doing all this. Um, so just an idea there, some sort of engagement and space question, and I'll think about it a little bit more, maybe in follow-up with you two, eighty, or if you wanna talk about.
Great.
Unless you already have the idea in your mind.
Um, I like, being a board member is a rewarding experience for me. I like that.
Yeah.
Very simple.
Certainly then when we are looking for um new recruits, we could say, you know, fifteen out of fifteen board members. That being a board member is rewarding for them. Solid to everyone, but kidding.
Also, is it, also like, I think, you know, situations can become like negative, right? And uh, trying to, you know, if, if a, if a board member is not feeling, whether it's hurt or put down or shut out, like, those would be things that you would want, we would want to know as a group. So like,
Yeah.
are you having it almost like a negative experience?
Yeah.
Because I, I think, I think you can see in, in situations where boards can become very toxic.
Right, and then recently, right, and somebody's thought that, not here for goodness, or maybe, I don't know how we feel about like a rating scale, but like one to five or something like, how, how's this experience for you or something like that? I don't know. But yes, right, it's not just pulsing for the, or um prompting for the positives. It's like, there's something that you, that's, that's dragging, dragging you down, you know, I'm in a rut.
And I feel like, like, the, the energy around a board meeting can, you know, quickly shift, right? If you have, I mean, like, we're usually pretty understanding of each other and also, but also I wouldn't say like-minded, but we're, we're, we're moving in that positive direction, but it, you know, you have
I have had days where I have left here and been not
Not super happy.
Which I think is normal too, right?
That's like, yeah. But they're, they're not the majority of days. So I think that's fair. I think it's fair to have that, like, most of the time, hard feeling, right? Like, yeah.
I feel like there was some issues like that on last year's survey. I don't know if it's worth like going back and looking at that.
I think this is, this is, yeah, this is last year's survey without the one to five.
Yeah.
Oh, these are the questions?
Okay, yep.
Yep. Um, all right, well, thank you. If any board member, before I, I'm gonna finish this thought, Steve, and then I'm gonna go to you, wants to lead this next year, please let me know now, and I would be more than happy to have someone take the lead on this for next year so that this is done um in advance of a meeting and we have the answers to discuss and not just the questions. So I think we have enough information to rewrite the survey and now we can actually move forward um in a different direction. Steve, go ahead.
Well, one thing after reading the third one, um, which basically said, are, are we grading the superintendent based off of, you know, if he's beating the board's policies and objectives? How, how is the board calibrating and checking that their objectives are actually achieving, achieving the goals that, that the board wants? And, and not having some unfortunate unintended consequence?
Um, so I don't think we need that upfront. That's okay, thank you. Um, so every time we monitor, every time we do a monitoring, every time we monitor a policy, there we go, got all the words in the right order. Every time we monitor a policy, we as a board decide to accept that policy because it has, um, because it, because the report meets the goals, right? So, so our policies say you have to do this, you can't do that, you're working toward this, right? It's like pretty, our policies are very, you know, the finances of the district are in being managed according to, you know, federal law, federal and state law, like that kind of. So every time we accept, that, that's an easy one, just going with a policy. Um, every time we accept it, we're saying, yep, you're doing your job. And so, um, I don't know if that answers your question, like, having, I don't know, you haven't read any monitoring reports yet, right? So it's
I have not seen one yet.
Yeah, so it's hard to, um, as Allison said, this is a really hard one to have your first meeting on, because we're asking, we're asking for input on that. Yeah, took us all a lot of time to get to. So, but what we, so all of our policies are, are asking the superintendent, are you doing your job? Breaking the job down into tiny pieces. And when the superintendent comes back with us with the information, the supporting data that says, yeah, I'm doing my job here. This is how I did my job in this area. This is how I did my job in this area. This is the supporting documentation to show that I'm doing my job in this area. We say, great, you're doing your job. So that's how you, um, a, a pure policy governance board would say, if you, if every policy is accepted, then you are doing your job and you're doing your job well. That's like the very big overview of that, yeah. We are a modified policy governance board and we can talk about that when we get into this a little bit deeper, but yeah. That's how we know. Um. All right, are we ready to move on to the next agenda item? Yes, okay. Our next agenda item is um superintendent report. Andrew, I get to stop talking.
Um, so I'll just kind of work through the report and then at each section, if folks have questions, I'll stop there. So first, just again, want to welcome Steve Biglio and also congratulate Katie, Gail, and Susan for being re-elected. Um, the next piece, something we've been talking about a lot, and there's a lot of links in here, is the budget information. And so, again, the finance committee, Nicole, John, and others have been working diligently for a long time to um make this work in light of all the things that are happening at the state level. Um, a few things to mention just right now is that ballots have been ordered for the April second vote and that the annual report should be ready by the end of this week. Nicole's making some kind of last-minute adjustments to the numbers. Um, and then there's all the information here related to the budget, and these things are being updated as needed. Um, are there any questions in this? I may or may not be able to answer it. If I can't answer your question, I will um provide it to John. Probably all been steeped in this for, for some time now.
We can't wait.
I only imagine, yes.
And then there's the informational meeting.
Yes, so there's the informational meeting on Thursday at Campbell's Home, and then um, meeting on the twenty-eighth at MMU, both at six P M.
That's just one question I had because it's not, that the meeting on Thursday is not in the morning, I don't think.
Correct, because, because we didn't know if it would be, that the date would be right state time. Yeah, okay, so this is an extra.
We have to update the um the board, sorry for talking out of turn. We have to update the board meeting calendar on the board page of the website. That has all the meetings for the year, you think?
It should be a finance committee meeting on that day.
Oh.
Um, okay. And normally we do it during the finance And normally we do it during the finance committee, so.
Um, okay, my mistake.
Nope, that's, it's a good call out, because it's not as clear as it could be.
And it's just sort of, I guess, how we label, right? Like, we're talking about it as a budget information meeting, and in years past, not the whole board would be there. It's just finance committee's responsibility, but I think we're really supportive of that, and this year, you know.
But it's March twenty eighth.
There is one on March fourteen, and one on March twenty eighth, and they are both pretty clear on the website right now.
Okay. I don't know if this is something we we care about, but the overall agenda that has all the board meetings for the year, which is. Um, I can send you the link. Has, does not have, has board reorganization on the eleventh, and then the next item on the calendar is the twenty fifth. And so because it's a subcommittee finance committee meeting, okay. Okay, because it's a committee meeting, like, yep, sorry.
Nope, that's fair. Good call out.
So I think we're all looking forward to April second.
Yeah.
Um, twenty twenty four, twenty five, school year calendar. So as you probably know from, John has talked about this in the past, this is not something that he does in isolation. This is done collaboratively with, um, at the minimum, all the other districts in Chitting County. And now they're starting to pull in Addison County as well. So that, the superintendents, they deal with this for a while. So the the calendar we have is not just something that John made up. It's in line with what the other districts are doing, and the intent of that is to have some sort of coherence between them. In particular for the career centers, so that students who are going to the career centers aren't losing out on days. Um, if, say, Essex Westford was on a different schedule than us. And so you can see in here, um, the different kind of pieces. For instance, the first student day this year is going to be August twenty sixth. And then the week prior will have four in-service days, um, as opposed to the usual three. So that's a change from years past where we've normally begun on a Wednesday. But a lot of the districts, um, were getting feedback that they wanted to start at the beginning of. Um, another thing to note is that.
Ever done that before?
I, so, I have not seen that before.
Communication priorities, right?
All right, great.
We mess with what you have scheduled.
Uh, another one to note is, in the past, Martin Luther King Junior Day has often been like a P D day. But this year, or next year, it will be no student and no staff day. Um, and so the full calendar, I think they're making some final tweaks, but that should be ready fairly soon. But we do know definitively what the first day of school will be, um, so that we can already start planning for like in-service and other things like that. Any questions on the calendar piece of thing? Well, yeah, yes. I think this happened last year.
It's slightly uh consistent. Uh, but this one is more from the R A D perspective. One thing that we've heard, uh, we heard this uh from, I wanna say Burlington Tech. Is that with, um, what it seemed to be is professional development days have fallen on different days. I know John has talked about trying to align that. That has affected the tech centers, because some, like a Monday, if one district is on a half day for P D. Especially Burlington Tech, which is half day programming, they might not see those students at tech.
Yes, so I can't speak to all of them specifically, because they don't have the in front of me. But there's different uh levels, I guess, where there's some that are just common across the board. Then there's some where we all have them as like a day that, say, we won't have students. But then they might be a P D day for some and P D for others, and then there's others that we can just kind of do whatever we want with them. My understanding, having looked at the calendar, is that there's far fewer of those days where we kind of do what we wanna do. And so there's gonna be more consistency between all the districts where that shouldn't be happening.
Okay, great, thanks.
Um, and districts will still have different early release days. That's where I.
That is a good point.
On some of the, when when I have a giant group of superintendents together, and they wanna talk about a statewide calendar. Or a region of a calendar, and I say, and early release days and all those kind of things? They said, well, not so much.
Yeah.
We'll get there, we'll get there.
Yeah.
We're just not there yet.
Yeah, I I will say, um, you know, having worked in education since two thousand and seven or so, we've come a long ways. Um, as far as like being more consistent with our calendars. Fair?
Um, I would, and I don't know if you know this, right, the the rationale behind moving to start on Monday. Uh, like, I think it's great, because as a parent, right, I think we always struggled with that last week of summer and then two more days. Um, I'm curious too about like the time off in October, why it's now before the federal holiday? Knowing that a lot of parents have that federal holiday off and now. If it's the Thursday, Friday instead of the Monday, and I'm talking around indigenous people's weekends. Um, right, like, I'm concerned about the perception of the community with that. And then, um. Who do I talk to about, like, not having our schools being polling?
I can't answer that. I can't answer the rationale.
Unpopular, but I just.
Cause I asked about the rationale today. Um, because when I was a teacher, I really liked the, kind of like built into it, it was like three days and then four days and then five days. Um, the rationale, um, that the superintendent, the main rationale that John was telling me, is that. The intent was to not have school go so far into June.
Oh, sure.
Um, which impacted like summer camps and things like that, especially with the, even though our winters are still a little wonky. We're still getting a lot of snow days, and it's getting pushed further and further, and when it bleeds into that next week, it impacts camps. That was the main reason.
Right, that's the first, that was the first day of school.
Yeah, the first day of school, and I can't answer the, the other one was the polling question?
Oh, no, October.
Oh, October, I didn't know about that.
Why the day is shifted off, because, right, like, if if. A lot of families, like parents, will have Monday of indigenous people's day off. And it it doesn't help families if it's Thursday, Friday, and there was school. Yeah, I'd love a day off without my kids, but I.
That I I all look at that, I don't have the answer to that one.
Yeah.
I was assuming that it's usually, when the day is usually the eleven.
Yeah, this year, curious if it was purposeful. Monday, the thirteenth is September twenty twenty five.
I gotta ask John, because uh, again, that that's a lot of what the superintendents talk about in their meetings, is building that calendar.
So just a coincidence that because the early release days aren't district wide, that we have a lot of early release days that are stacked up to. Either days days off on either side of it.
Yeah.
Yes, unknown.
Yeah.
Got it.
On the polling thing, um, I'm sure there there's valid reasons, uh, for having to do what we're doing. But I I think it is a missed opportunity for students to see civic process in like happening. Like, my memory, I remember, oh, I don't have physical education today, why not? Oh, they're voting. What's going on in there? I should be a school board member someday.
You said in the short.
When I went to the meeting.
This is true. Right, okay.
Um, so, you know, maybe, maybe someday, uh, for some votes, uh, that would be cool.
And actually, that, now that I think about it, because I did talk about that with John. And one of the reasons why they weren't gonna have school on voting day with the polling location. Was a lot of it had to do with parking.
Yeah, it's, it's too bad.
Yep, no, but I hear you.
I have one other question.
Oh, okay.
No one else has asked the question, what is E I D on March?
E, E, E.
That's a holiday.
It's a religious holiday. Yes.
That's new.
Yes, and that's uh in line with what other districts um in our region are doing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sure.
It's a big feast, and if you get invited, it's great. So online.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Go for it.
Susan?
Susan?
Yeah, along those lines, um, I had a question about Jewish holidays. This is something that we've talked about over many years. Um, and I know some of the other Chittenden County districts do give off, uh, give either Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur off. Just curious if that has been come, has come up at all.
I will have to ask John, since he is the one who's part of all those conversations. Um, I do know that we have a uh calendar with all of the religious holidays on it. And so something that we do as a district, which is in line with what uh neighboring districts do, is to make sure that we don't have certain events on those days. Such as board meetings or sporting events. And so we do make a point to look at those different holidays to, even though we may have school on those days, to not have after-school activities. Um, but to your particular question, I'd have to check with John on that.
Just that I know that a lot of the other districts have have gone to that in recent years. So we seem to be a little bit of an outlier, and that, like, I know Burlington, South Burlington, uh, Champlain Valley Union. They all have at least one of those um fall high holidays off.
Uh, just to the polling place, I know for Huntington, and I, I'm I'm guessing maybe Bolton is in a similar vote. Uh, it's the old place, actually. Going, but there's no other location that would ever. The old one or the new one?
Oh, there's two?
Yeah.
I don't. Right, like, why not? The more community, not that our schools aren't community-based, but there are plenty of other places, not plenty, there's whatever, a handful. Where you could set up a polling station where the kids could continue to come to school, not have their days interrupted. Because of their safety and security reasons, right? Like, there's a reason why we can't get to the schools, right? But if on on polling days, right, people are in class, wondering why they can't go to P E. But there's nothing stopping those people coming in, wandering about the building too, right? So why not move it to an another building in each of our communities? So that kids can be disrupted by voting. And then you take your kid with you at the end of the day to the polling place.
Yeah, I think churches, I think churches are the only places with polling lots in our towns, and I don't know that all of our towns have that. But I think it's a fair point to have that discussion.
Yep, I wrote it down to the, sort of John.
And Susan, uh, Yom Kippur is on a Saturday this year, so that could be why it's not part of the, it could be. So I would just kind of flag that, right? And then the Friday before it is off. Normally you only have the day Yom Kippur off, and, yeah.
Oh, the Friday is off, it's not on the day.
The eleven, oh, yeah, so. Um. So that could be, that could be.
Well, I just, I don't think we've ever had it off, but.
Correct, we have not.
Good to know.
So I'll move to the last uh piece of the report, and that's the early grades literacy update. This is one of our district priorities. And so this is something that I personally have been doing quite a bit of work with. So as you know, and as I've spoken about, we've done quite a bit of work, really, since I have come on board. To rethink how we approach um early grades literacy and really at the K two level, but also really the K four level as well. And one of the things we've done recently is I pulled together a group, um, that includes administrators, teachers, interventionists. And we meet pretty frequently, we're meeting about every other week right now, to look at a couple of different things. One is we have what are called our benchmark understandings and our learning targets, which really define what it is we want students to know and be able to do. And so those that are already being crafted, but we're refining and revising those to ensure that we have what is called a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Basically means that can we do all the things that we say we wanna do in the school year and do it well? So that we're not trying to do content overload and cram too much in there. Um, one group is looking at that. We have another group that is working to develop what's called a literacy block framework. And so what that is, is essentially like during the time of the day when we're focusing on literacy, which involves both, you know, reading and writing. Though our focus has really been on reading recently, is what is it that we want that to look like so that we can make the most use of our time? Um, moving away from what had previously been called the reader workshop model. So trying to build up that, but to focus more on ensuring that there's explicit instruction on certain things. Such as phonics and also comprehension as well. But then we have another group that is doing an audit of all the resources that we have. So we have a variety of programs, if you will, um, such as Hegarty and U F I, which are focused on phonics. And then a wide variety of other resources. So what we're looking at is what is that we want teachers to really focus and use? And what are the things we don't want them to use anymore? Because there's still some things that we're doing that we're just hanging on to, because there's nothing else to fill that gap. And so we're finding what we need to fill those gaps and then making sure that we're moving away from certain practices and curriculum that we don't wanna focus on anymore. And so we've been meeting pretty quickly. We made a lot of progress in just a very short amount of time. I'm meeting with this group again, I believe, next week. And in the few short weeks that we've been meeting since a little before, I think, I think we started meeting in December. Um, a lot of progress has been made. Another piece we're working on is building out both the professional learning for this year and also for next year. So we have a really clear scope and sequence of what it is we want to uh talk to teachers about and build their capacity on. And so, look, all that work is coming along really well, and um I feel really positive about that. Another piece, you know, that goes with this is resources. So with our S R funds, we were able to purchase purchase quite a few resources last year. Particularly in the realm of equitable texts to get put into classrooms. That recently, there is a grant opportunity through the Agency of Education. Essentially, they had a bunch of S R money left over, so they decided to just kind of put it out there to schools. And you could apply to it, and they have a rubric where they go through the different grants and approve them. That, we will find out if, so we put in a grant for about seventy five thousand dollars for high-quality instructional resources. And we should find out in the next week or two whether or not, like, we get any of that money, part of that money. Apparently, a lot of folks applied to it. Originally, they were supposed to announce the award on February twenty ninth, but because they had so many people, they bumped it out to middle of March. So we'll see if we get that, if you do get that, then that will just help us uh purchase further resources for our classroom. So overall, um, early grades, literacy, you know, we're doing a lot of work, speaking with other districts in Chittenden County. They're all in the same boat as us. We're, we're not doing anything that other districts aren't doing. And we're kind of where we should be, given that we've switched from one kind of approach to reading to a completely different approach, the science of reading. Um, so I think we're, we're on track. Questions on any of that? Yes, Katie?
Um, so I love that we're doing all of this support of early literacy. And I think everything that you're doing is great, and the way that, the speed at which this is happening is awesome. Um, and I've seen it in real life playing out. My question is, um, if you could please speak to what we are doing to support learners. In middle school and high school, I've mentioned this before, who, um, we, through no. Purposeful, you know, effort, may have not supported in their literacy. As well as we could have, knowing the information that we know now. And they are out there just maxilating, not necessarily, um. Qualifying for different interventions. So maybe speaking to how multi-tiered systems of support is helping that specifically. And how we're helping parents and families in our community navigate the differences between. Um, special services and other interventions.
Great question. So one of the nice things is, you know, we're, we're working really hard to make sure that we're not isolating things as elementary, middle, and high school. Which we are working on developing and have a pretty good coordinated curriculum horizontally. And so our middle school coaches work closely with our elementary coaches to ensure that, you know, what is happening in fourth grade. Directly translates to what they're doing in fifth grade and upward, and then also from the middle school um to the high school transition as well. I was actually just talking with Mike Weston about that the other day, is something we need to um revisit again next year. Cause we've been doing that on certain subject areas, and I think E L A is the next one to kind of look at. So that we do have kind of a close connection between, you know, really K twelve. In relation to those students who might be struggling, you mentioned multi-tiered system supports. That's really the big one is, and that's something that we do, K twelve. So really make sure that we're constantly collecting data on students in the classroom to see where they're at. And if they're struggling, then providing that kind of tier two, kind of right now, what do you need? But also the tier three intervention, or, and we have interventionists, um, you know, at all of our schools. To make sure that those students are receiving support. It looks a little bit different at the high school, where they have like a learning lab that's focused specifically on like the content area. They have content-specific teachers working with students. But there is the system, the M T S S piece, to really look. But there is the system, the MTSS piece, to really look at that data and see, you know, if any student is struggling, then catching that right away. That system's still being, you know, built. It's not 100% done. But, you know, that's been another area of focus over the last, well, since I've been here, is trying to build out that system and refine it so that it's consistent across all of our schools. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think, and just, I guess, so I, speaking specifically to how we're communicating to parents and families that they know that's a fine line and it's a difficult line for them to understand.
Yeah, I think, you know, as we've worked on this, teachers are getting clear with the different components so that they can, because I think they're the first kind of line of defense with talking about these sorts of things with parents. And then also special educators, interventionists, and administrators to help, you know, clarify these different pieces for parents. That being said, particularly when we start talking about special education, July of 2023, new special education laws came down the pike and teachers and administrators are still trying to understand these things. So we're kind of in this wonky zone where we're trying to make the new special ed law fit within our current system. And again, we're not the only ones doing this. And we've come a long way. Mary Lundeen, who's retiring at the end of the year, she has done fantastic work to help implement that new law because she knows it backwards and forwards. But it's been, I don't want to say bumpy, but it's, the new law is very different than how things have been working in the past, and that's just been taking time for folks to understand. And, you know, a lot of the communication comes from when we're working with students through that process.
Thank you.
That's, um, that's really all I have. Thank you.
Other questions?
I appreciate the efforts to get the calendar aligned. You know, it's not easy to do, but certainly helpful in some ways. The idea of standardizing the end date too. I think people actually will be able to cut apart by the Monday start, so as soon as we can.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that. Just to, just to highlight the, the board members who who are no longer on the board will be celebrated at Golden Apple Awards, just to say that again, which is May 20th at 6:00. So for anybody concerned about that, just wanted to highlight that, yeah.
Is that something we also usually choose at this meeting?
That's where I was going next. But we're going to do that with other districts, I guess, if that works out. All right, so the next item on the agenda is approve previous meeting minutes. We have two minutes to approve February 12th and February 28th. Can we get a motion to approve both together?
A motion to approve both of them together.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? From an eye, a hand? Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Other business? On, two things, actually. We do have a board training on Monday, March 25th. I believe it's going to be here.
I think so.
Think it's going to be here. If you can attend in person, please do. Also, if we have new board members to appoint, we will have a meeting first that will last about 15 or 20 minutes. And then we will move over into the training. So please be in person if you can. If you have to be, great, then we are having a if you have to be remote, you can be remote, but ideally you will be here in person. We will confirm, I, I believe so.
I'll, I'll confirm.
We'll confirm that. Check your email. Don't show up without checking in first. So that's, that's one other business. Second other business is I need a volunteer or two ideally to review the Golden Apple nominations and to make a recommendation to the board on which to approve. Our Golden Apple Awards are awards where we award volunteers in most of our schools. Usually there are nominations from all of our schools, sometimes not all of our schools. And it is to highlight somebody's exceptional contribution to the district. So, or to that specific school, sometimes the district. So I know Susan has done this in the past. I don't want to volunteer her.
Me too, I've done it.
Oh, you've done it in the past, too, yeah, great. Oh, and Kimmy, yeah. So we have lots of experience. So we can take three, we can take two, but I'm hoping we have some volunteers, anybody available. Don't everybody raise your hand.
I'm happy to, happy to do it again, if you name you.
And Allison? Great, yeah. So Susan and Allison, can you write that down for John, will be our Golden Apple Award Committee. Thank you, appreciate that.
And we had a day that we had to change the meeting from MMU. Is it the May, is it already been changed on the?
It's scheduled on there on May 13th, but is that the day that we can?
Are you still here? Talking about the June 14th or whatever that one was. That's what me and Katie and Abby were talking about.
Awesome. So we are now meeting at MMU in May and that is perfect. So great. Okay, so the only thing that is not on the overall board calendar page is our training for next, oh, two weeks from today, I'm going to need to check. So that will get updated shortly. Any other, other business? Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Heather. And a second? Thanks, Katie. All in favor, please. Oh, Gail, are you voting? So thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.